Okay, it's six thirty, so we'll go ahead and get started. Call with any further order. Roll call.
Bert Schreit.
Present.
John Valencourt.
Present.
Paula Anderson. Sean Mayfield. Max Poy.
Here.
Colton Martin.
Here.
All right, this time we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its every power, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you guys had a chance to look at the agenda.
I need to add the special minutes for the October twenty-first session. I forgot about them and I had to do them after.
I saw you sent those out.
Yes.
Everybody said take a look at them.
If you would add to new business resolution regarding twenty twenty-four mayor salary, and then also a resolution regarding the twenty twenty-four recorded treasurer salary. Please.
So C and D for resolutions.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Carrie. All right, and this time we're gonna have public input. We've got two minutes for anybody that wants to come up to the mic from the public.
Hi, my name's Linda Moore, and I just wanted to give a friendly reminder about our annual tree lighting ceremony. It's December first here at the community building from five to eight P. M. And the police department will be here, they'll be doing crafts with the children, and then we'll have, we're gonna have sliders, and we're asking the public if they'd like to bring cookies, and then we'll be doing our tree lighting outside. So we have these flyers on the back table there, so please grab one, and pretty soon, hopefully this weekend, we'll be getting banners, and I got ten yard signs to put around the communities to let everybody know about that event.
Great, thank you. All right, any other public comments before we move on? All right, approval of the minutes, we'll look at the October eighth minutes first for approval. You guys have a chance to look at those.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any public comment before we vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Carrie. The October twenty-fourth special session minutes.
Yeah.
You guys looked at those?
One clarification, Martha, I probably sent this, but just a matter of clarity, probably under the discussion about mill branch access, all business A, second page. Reforce the way down. So the mayor asked, we can take it to Crafton Toll and ask what was ever brought to our attention? And then I think I said we paid them to engineer the project, or how it just says paid to engineer the project.
Okay, I'll fix that, yeah, you did say it, but, yeah.
Other than that.
Motion to approve with those edits.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any public comment before we vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Carrie. All right, and the financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
He's good to read it first.
So as of October thirty-first, the general fund was seven hundred and forty thousand two hundred and one twelve. The street fund was two hundred and nine thousand eight thirty-eight fifty-two. Act nine eighty-eight was nine thousand six fifty eighteen. We have one million forty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-three oh eight N. C. D.'s.
What was the first number that you read?
Yeah, the first.
Seven hundred forty thousand two hundred and nine.
Okay.
Yeah, I heard the same thing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, any public comment before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we can move on to the public report.
All right, for the month of October, we had two hundred and thirty-one calls per service. We had thirty-four total charges, we had seven criminal charges, one PCFPD charge, three warrants, twenty-eight moving violations, and a hundred warning citations.
There was three animal complaints, have we implemented where you guys are removing animals, has that been done yet?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Animal complaints, I know our ordinance allows for removal of animals, have we started doing that yet?
I know that we had a complaint, and I know that we followed up with it, but I don't know what the result was.
I don't think any of them were actually anything that needed that Dave and them had to respond to.
But just from my knowledge, like if somebody calls and they've got a stray dog, we're like prepared to pick up animals now, or?
Yeah, we are, yeah, we have two crates, actually.
Cool.
Yeah, the only thing we haven't done yet is to build the kennel out, which we're looking at getting the steel for that and having it built by the end of the year. We already have the concrete pad ready to go, so we just have to get it built, so.
Hey Chief, have you all did follow up on any of the ordinance? What we talked about last time, the unsightly conditions of property and trash, have you all had any assistance with that?
No, we haven't had assistance with any of that yet. But now Lacey is certified, so she can do a lot of that on her own.
Thanks, Tom.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So move on to the street department with the infrastructure report. So for the city park, there's water line that's been laying all through the south entrance. We're waiting on hookups in Fayetteville City, and we have given them the authorization to go ahead and hook up, they got to a street cut to do that, and so they'll be coming to get that down within the next month. Twelve, up to twelve weeks, and we'll get back with this, so hopefully it'll be done. And then they've cut down some fallen trees that were in the park and removed those, and large pile of brush from the park that we had done for the bulldozing to get that south entrance put in. Cleaned up trash at the twin bridges, replaced the stop sign, street signs on Blue Springs at Spring Park Lane, installed two speed limit signs, warning for dangerous curb on Blue Springs Road, replaced the stop and street signs at Church Street and Tuttle, removed two deer from the city streets, cut and removed a large pile of brush from Oxford Bend after the storm, and then they did the hazmat training and the animal service training, and an eight-one-one training. And then future projects, install, install all the new street signage for the streets in Goshen, so I think they've got eighteen that are marked at this point by eight-one-one, so we have to get them, each individual street sign has to have its own marking, and then they come out and mark those, and then they can set the street signs.
Eight-one-one.
That's for underground.
Underground wire.
Underground wires for digging. So there's only, and I think there's only, I think out of the eighteen, there were only, I think, six that aren't gonna have to be hand-dubbed because of the lines being so close in proximity. So initially, we thought we were gonna be able to put those in with just a hammer device for a pile driver to put those posts in, but a lot of them will have to be hand-dubbed because they're too close to the lines. So this is just some of the signs that they replaced that were damaged, and this is the debris from some of the storms that they had to remove. This is all the wood that they cut up at the park.
What do we do with the debris?
It goes back here in the old pond, and we burn that at this point. We'll have another place where we'd pile brush at some point, so, but that's where it is now. These are the new street signs, they've only had two that they've been able to get, put in, and both those had to be hand-dubbed, so they're gonna, they're digging them by hand and then putting concrete around them, so, they look nice once they're up.
What is the compliance of water leaks, just in general?
Water leaks from?
Cities.
Like water leaks from Fayetteville Water? Not that's been called into City Hall. I mean, they may be calling Fayetteville, but they haven't, they haven't called us at this point, so. I know you guys can see the massive construction going on, they've started here, and they're gonna work their way over, they're gonna actually cut this street on Thursday, so Clark Street will be closed as of Thursday to cut across. So they're coming from this side, and they're working their way down, and then I guess they're gonna meet from Richland over, so.
So you said they were gonna do a cut to go to the park?
They will have to cut, yeah, that's, that's to tap in off of the line that goes up.
As opposed to boring it?
Yeah.
So the special meeting in minutes, I saw something about Fayetteville Water Taps being capped?
Yeah, so we, we actually had to ask for additional, we had, we had to call for Anderson and say, can we get two taps for the city? And we got those, but that was only after we called him, because we initially got told no. So.
Yeah, that, that was first I've heard of that.
Yeah.
In a minute.
The moratorium.
So there'll be one on each side?
There'll be one on the north and the south entrance, yeah. And we have to have two taps at each site, because one tap is for irrigation and one tap is for facilities. Even though we don't have facilities yet, we've gotta put that in because we've gotta put the line in.
That go through different meter.
Yeah, they go through a different meter. I didn't know that either, so that was my first hearing that irrigation meters are separate from facility meters where you're gonna have water and sewer together. Yep, so there's actually four meters that are going in, two on the north side, two on the south side, so we had to run twice as much pipe as well, so. Any other questions? All right. All right, and then we'll move on to the Goshen Fire District Report. So it looks like they had a total of fifty-four incidents, eighteen types, and again, the most is gonna be the medical assist, and there were four building fires. And planning commission report. I know they didn't have a meeting this month, there wasn't any activity as far as planning commission, financial report, because there wasn't anything to put through planning commission.
Did I read correctly, Tom is stepping down?
He's stepping down his chair, yeah. I think he's still gonna remain on the planning commission.
Okay.
But he didn't move his chair, I can follow up with him and verify that he's still gonna be on.
Yeah, he, he said he could just, could serve his chair, so then we'll appoint someone else's chair.
I think Lauren has agreed that he's, Lauren or Liz has agreed that one of them is gonna step in his chair, and the way the ordinance is written is they elect their own chair, so, I mean, I'd be happy with either one of them.
But we don't have a vacancy.
No. Not, not at this time, not unless something happens different, so. All right, building inspection report, J.D.'s here for that.
October was definitely busier than September. I did thirty-seven field inspections, nine of those were final inspections, so you have nine new families moving to the Goshen area, and started five new homes, did five footings. Overall, it was a pretty busy month. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, J.D. All right, and we'll move on to the Parks and Rec Report, Mike's gonna be doing that for us tonight.
So on October twenty-fourth, Mayor Stroud went down to Little Rock and presented to the Parks Recreation Panel down there on that grant that we had applied for, and my understanding is that we were awarded ten thousand dollars on that, on that grant, is that correct, was that the forestry?
Not the one in Little Rock, that's the, so we were awarded a ten thousand dollar grant from the forestry grant that we applied for. The grant for the state park that we.
We're still waiting to hear on that one. Okay, all right. Sorry.
Hopefully next week we'll hear.
Okay, all right. Also wanted to let everyone know that due to some travel by the Parks Commissioners in November and December, we voted at our last meeting to postpone those meetings until January, and, because it didn't look like we were gonna have a quorum anyway, so we can set up a working meeting if that's necessary between now and then, because I know we're also working on the, the Parks, the master plan for the parks as well. And the commissioners have all put in their, their comments towards that, and that is at City Hall right now, is my understanding, with Abby, and of course, they've proceeded from there, but the Parks Commission Commissioners have all had an opportunity to make their comments known on that, and it's all been turned in, so we're ready to move on to the next step on that. So also, some updates on the park, we've had quite a, quite a bit of activity going on in the park here recently, just wanted to bring you guys up to speed on what we're doing over there. The north entrance parking lot, of course, has, you know, Tomlinson has been working over there, and they've completed the, the painting of the parking lot over there, if you haven't been over there, it looks great, it really does, it's a, it's a real nice addition, I think we've still gotta do some striping on that, but otherwise, it's essentially done. I know I've seen some people over there that have, have been parking in, on the parking lot, and it's good to see some cars over there already. In addition to that, we've also started to do some cleanup around the, the old spring house over there, we've, that was severely overgrown down there to the point where if you walked down the path, you couldn't even see it. That's completely changed, and I would encourage you all to take a walk over there, it's only about a quarter of a mile over there, a quarter of a mile back from the north parking lot. It just, it looks fabulous compared to what it did before, and a lot more cleanup to do down there, eventually, we'd like to consider asking the, 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 the city to look at funding a, a renewal, a, you know, some type of a restoration of that spring house over there, which really all it was, is gonna require is a, is a roof over it to kinda keep some of the debris from, from getting into the spring area, but it's cleaned up really nice over there, so if you have a chance, go over and take a look at it.
I saw all your pictures that you put on.
It, it looks a hundred times better than, than what it did before. We've also been working with the Arbor Board to try to do some cleanup around some of the exhibit trees that we've got in the park that had gotten overgrown in those areas, so people can actually walk up to the trees now. The sugar berry tree over on the north side, just before you get to where the trail narrows down to the crossing of the Mill Creek area, it had a fence in front of it, which has been removed now, and we cleaned up a lot of the vegetation around that, so now it looks really nice, and you can walk up to the tree and, and enjoy that, that old sugar berry tree, which is huge, by the way. And then there was a couple of other trees, I think it's a silver maple and a, what was the other tree? Let's see, a hackberry tree, big hackberry tree over by the spring house, which we also cleaned up around that, and so it's, it looks totally different over there around where the chicken pad is in the spring house, so again, you know, if you have a chance, try to get over there and take a look at it. Also, I wanted to mention that the disc golf thing is, you've probably noticed if you've been over here, that the disc golf baskets are still sitting back here, and it's because we've just been busy addressing some other things in the park, and we just haven't had a chance to get to that. The plan is still to try to set up a little course back here behind the community building, just as a temporary spot for people to go out there and toss discs around, and hopefully we'll get that done in the next month or so, so, any questions?
Mike, I know we talked last time, I made a question for the mayor, the north entrance, we talked about putting a sign up to the gentleman that was sitting in here.
Yes, so there's, and we've actually, so Larry Mays is the rock contractor that we've been working with to get this rock, I called him again today to follow up, we're just waiting on the rock to get to the engraver. So the engraver is over towards Huntsville, it's a monument company, they will do the engraving, they said allow thirty days for that engraving, once they get the rock, and then we'll have it installed, it's an Eagle Scout project, they're gonna help install and, and do some vegetation around it, so.
I thought we were putting a private property or something else sign up next to this property, so people would stay away from it, did I dream that up?
Oh, you were talking about the.
We're talking about the.
The person drive.
Terry Oaks. Were you talking about Terry Oaks over there that lives? Just a.
I was sitting on here.
The private drive entrance.
Oh, you mean for the, the other entrance?
The old entrance.
Yeah, we'll put a private drive sign up, yeah.
Just make sure we follow up on that.
Yeah, actually, I followed up with Mark Mahaffney with Tomlinson with that question, so I talked to Mark today as well, they're gonna put the striping on the concrete once it's cured, so just because the striping's not there doesn't mean it's not done, we're just waiting for the concrete, concrete to cure, and then they've gotta do the handicap or the disabled parking as well there. But that drive from R. Dot was to be decommissioned after the new one was open, so I, I, I'm not gonna say, you know, it's not gonna be the city's responsibility to maintain that drive, so, you know, Mr. Oaks can, I definitely use that, as far as I'm concerned, they can put a gate there, we can put a private drive right there on there where the gate is, but the gate will stay shut, they'll have to open the gate to come in and out there.
The gate would be?
The gate that we currently have, that, that used to be able to show that.
That goes into where the parking lot was?
Where the old entrance, yeah.
Right, but the other, does that go by?
It goes below and off to the side of the new parking, yeah.
Right.
Because the new parking, there's a big amount of dirt that comes up and then comes down.
Right.
And it kinda took some of the drive there, so I don't know how well that's gonna remain over time, just with wash, because the creek does get up into that area.
Yeah.
So.
There's also a lot of trees over on that side, which we've been working, we've got the fencing removed, but there's a line of trees between the old entrance and the new entrance that are kinda scrubby, some of them are, we've got some pretty good sized trees there that we're not gonna remove, but the small scrub trees and all that, we're gonna get those all cleaned up and, and make it look nice, it already looks ten times better than it did with the fence removed, but we're gonna work on getting that, get that scrub stuff cleaned up too, so it'll look real nice.
And that'll help to be able to see the new rock sign, and the rock sign has to be out of the right of way from R. Dot, so it has to be forty feet back from the side of the road, because we don't have facilities down there yet, they will not put up a state, I mean, a park sign from R. Dot until we get bathrooms down there.
So Mike, you just mentioned the dead trees, is that the same thing that's in the Arbor Board report, that where the dead trees are gonna stay?
Uh, no, so there's, there's different, there's different dead trees in the park, yeah, a lot of the dead trees that, that Arbor Board wanted to keep are the ones that are not gonna be, where people would be injured by them, but where they could be a public safety issue, those trees need to be removed.
Yeah, there's some areas where, you know, you've got some pretty good sized dead trees that has limbs that are sticking out over the trail area, and so, you know, we're recommending that we, we take those down so that they're not a danger to the public when they're walking through there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just to confirm, kind of back to Tom Henley there, the, I just looked it up, because I was like, I thought I read something different, but he just says that he's resigning from the Goshen Planning Commission, period.
That's how I read it too.
So.
That's why I asked, that's what I recall too.
It doesn't say anything about chairman.
Probably says he's gonna stay on till the end of the year.
He says, please say something, resignation from the Goshen Planning Commission effective October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, period.
I'll follow up with him tomorrow.
No, he, that's how I read it, well, I'm not sure if that's.
That's what it says.
I understood something different.
I know what it says, but that's not what, that wasn't the conversation I had, but I'll ask him again tomorrow, I'll follow up.
He said he was staying on till the end of the year.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
And then next we have the Arbor Board Report.
Maybe it's, excuse me, the link for the YouTube isn't seeming to be working, I think there's some people that are interested to tune in if they can.
Jason, do you know?
I don't know. Oh boy, so.
No, Lacey usually sets it up.
Yeah. Cause it shows that it's streaming.
He says they can see it, they just can't hear it.
Sometimes it, it doesn't capture sound, and we have to go back in and add that after, we've got to do that on, I think, two different occasions for some reason.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure why, but sometimes it doesn't.
Most typical person here.
They should just all be lip readers.
All right, I'm gonna test you on trees.
Oh no.
While we're not on the schedule, all right.
Hickory.
Hickory, shagmark hickory.
Not shagmark.
Pig nut.
Pig nut we have in the park, but it's not, we have pig nut and shagmark, this one we have in Goshen, anybody recognize? This is one leaf, these are leaflets, and there's your leaf scar, so it's a really large, large, this is a mokar nut, I got this for a long line of roads, all right, another tree test.
Burro.
It's a burro.
It's a burro, the largest oak leaf, and these can get as long as a foot, and we have at least two burrocks in the park, and burrocks can survive a prairie fire, and they're acres this big. Okay. Boris Don reported, Wilma Gwynn, some of you remember Wilma, I finally got her plate reordered for the third time, and it came in corrected this time, so that will be up, put up tonight, that'll be off my list. I'm gonna tell you things that aren't in the report, since my amigo is working on the computer. This will be the last Arbor Board report you're gonna hear, because we're not gonna do Arbor Board reports in the future.
No, we're gonna do it twice a year.
Twice a year, okay, and we've had seven people resign from the Arbor Board, Karen Boyd, Mary Loftus, Karen Sparks, Tom Chappell, Steve Snyder, Dave Nichols, and Barbara Lupton are all resigning, and then we are looking forward to some new members coming up, so that's not in the report, but that's, today we met out here and put the, cleaned up the rain garden, which processes all the water from the building, and, which is a horrible mess if, if you don't have gubbers, and that place has deeply embedded rock, and you don't have a swamp out there with the rain garden there, so we finally got that looking a little better after all of the construction. The name of the committee will remain, Goshen Arbor Board, I think we were sentimental about that, and I won't go through all of the things about ordinance one twenty-seven, the only thing I think I need to mention is that we're supposed to, to report in December after, but our meeting time is annually put after the city council meets, so we may need to change that in twenty twenty-five.
And twenty twenty-five, you guys can report in January and then again in June.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, that's one of the things Betty wanted me to stress.
Yeah.
I've ordered about a whole bunch of new tree tags for the trees up near the southern entrance, since we're gonna have more people coming in from that area and they'll be opening, so I'll be putting those up during this week.
I have one question about your tree tags, I've been out there to see them lately, are they tags that are going on the tree or on the ground?
Some of the ones we do around the community building, we put them on the ground, they're not, putting them on the ground is not practical at the park with all the mowers and yada, yada. And so we use arboretum-based things that have a spring in them, so they can flex when, as the tree grows.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, because one of the resolutions, what have you here, said that we would not put anything on any of the trees ever, period, so we need to put an exception in that for tags.
It's part of the Arbor Board ordinance.
So, yeah, we need to.
Nothing that we hung, mounted, yeah.
Yeah.
All of that.
Okay.
So we'd be in conflict, you know, I, I think the tree tags are wonderful, and, you know, I wanna see them in there.
I've never read that one little thing, and so that can be something that Andrew can take care of. We, one of the things that happened the last week, I, was a monarch butterfly before three thousand five hundred people at the fairgrounds in the insect fair, representing Goshen Arbor Board, and this Monday at the Fayetteville Public Library, we had a tree table for four hundred kids, talking to them about connectivity of how trees connect so many different species and stuff together, and what they do for water, so that was well represented. So that's all I've got tonight, and I want to commend the Chainsaw Devil, Mike Nemo, who can, got rid of that Bradford pear near the city hall, and the mayor has agreed to buy some tree shrubs and woody vines, and I'll be doing some tree education things, and we're gonna do them for the Arbor Board and the public if you want to join. Any questions?
Do you wanna mention the trees that have been purchased over there that haven't
Do you wanna mention the trees that have been purchased over there that haven't been planted yet?
Yes, we picked out, I think there, I counted them today. It looked like there was thirteen, yes. And they'll be planting a mix of hardwoods, burrocks, chinkapins, chinkapin oats, not chinkapins, behind the city hall to help manage the water and runoff back there and also to shade the building. Sorry about that.
That's section three of that forest ordinance about the signs. So we need to do something about that.
Yeah.
Section three.
Section three.
Somehow I didn't even think about it.
Yeah, when we review the ordinance, we can make that as an adjustment.
Well, I think, you know, in my potential placing rope wire sign, okay. Then we can just put an exception, other than arboretum tags for identification.
Yeah.
You only need to send that language to the hall about.
Yeah, CC Brian on it, we'll just get it changed.
Okay, thank you for five minutes, sir.
It's the revised one. Thank you, Mary. Any questions before we move on? All right, so we'll move on. And we have called 811 to get those trees planted, or we put in the request, so hopefully we can get those trees planted on Friday, if they get it hard.
If your expediter is not ready.
It's ready.
If it's ready for sure.
Yeah.
Because I know someone who's got them bored in front of the tractor.
I don't want, let me go on to Old City Business. So this is the annexation update. So this was the unofficial results that came in. So it was voted total 1,700. And it was voted down by 73.4%. And, you know, what I wanted to talk about was, as far as an update, I think this was a big learning process for all of us. I don't know, has the city ever done a wide annexation before?
No.
No?
I don't know.
So we weren't required to do the public town hall meetings, but I think they were very enlightening for me. I think a lot of us gained insight from it, as well as friends of mine that live in the area. And I think all of us have probably friends that have talked to us about they don't wanna be in the city. And I respect that. I think the results showed that that was the overwhelming agreement with everybody that lived in the annexation area. So I think that these results for us is good, because we don't wanna try to annex people that don't wanna be a part of the city. And that was not something that we ever intended to do in the beginning. It was always for us to be able to provide services for that area. If they didn't wanna be a part of the city, then they made their voices heard, and I think that's good, so.
I was, I was also surprised by a lot of the comments by citizens in the city of Goshen. That they were on Goshen, this and that, and whatnot, saying that they didn't want it, they voted no. I mean, a lot of them. And if there's that many that are saying, then there would have to be a very large number that voted no, any of them. I mean, when you look at the numbers.
Yeah. Yes.
I wanna thank the council for coming to that last meeting to just kinda see the kind of, the feedback we were getting. A lot of it was just a lot of disinformation, that, you know, we gave them answers, but it wasn't an answer they wanted. And so they proceeded to, you know, go to the point of, we were doing it for our own personal benefit, as like we were getting something out of it. But I was glad to see Birch and Paula, Sean and Max and Colton stood up because that actually had support that we weren't just, literally, they were, we as a committee was only doing this ourselves instead of a city, a city decision that was made to pursue this. So that was nice to have the council support at that last meeting to kinda back us up from that standpoint.
And I think lessons learned too. I think if we're gonna do a big project like this, we can have some town hall meetings on the front end to gain some insights before we decide to either move forward or not move forward, even with the, you know, doing a major project like that. So I think that, you know, for me, those are lessons that I will learn for moving forward with any kind of big infrastructure, you know, improvements or projects that we're looking at doing within the city or something that's gonna, you know, affect a lot of people around us, so.
Yeah, the only thing I would make is, I'm glad to be at the public forum and hear from the folks. Commentary of some of the comments, from my perspective, there was nothing nefarious about the process at all. I think if it had been done better. I think how the minutes were written, and that's not, knock on words, there was back and forth about minutes many, many months ago. How the minutes portrayed themselves probably didn't capture the intent.
Exactly.
So, this is why we have democracy. So I'm glad that people got out and voted, and I think the message is very clear.
All right, any other comments? We have a couple of people from the annexation area that are here.
Thank you for recognizing us here. Thank you for all the comments today at the meeting. And folks went out and voted, and then every voice is heard. And, you know, I would say lessons we've probably learned by everyone in the room and those participating in the process. And we wish the littlest in Goshen and leadership of Goshen, yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the police presence with the Riverside Estates ordinance. I leave. Yep.
If you all recall, this is just the ordinance that, well, Riverside is requesting that the police department patrol and enforce traffic laws there, so to speak. And so we've adopted this ordinance that's based on the conversations we've had before tonight to authorize the police department to do that. And I've left this somewhat vague, that they would be enforcing, as it's written in here, any traffic ordinance is adopted by the city council. I mean, the city council has adopted by reference all of the state statutes regarding speeding, you name it. But this is not necessarily geared towards this. It's more our city ordinance that I think gets written somewhat often. Which is not specifically speeding. And so, because there's not, I think the neighborhood does have a posted speed limit in there, but it's not one that the city's adopted. So we're not gonna be enforcing that. So that's what this ordinance is, based upon the requirements subdivision.
I'll make a motion to read in title only.
Start.
What motion to read in title only?
Would you all like to try and adopt it tonight? If so, you would need to suspend all of the rules and waive the second and third reading.
Yeah.
It's up to you all.
Yeah, I'll waive the second and third reading.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, waive second and third.
Start.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Birch Wright?
Yes.
John Valencourt?
No.
Paula Anderson?
Uh, yes.
Max Poy?
Yes.
Colton Martin?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing traffic law enforcement within Riverside Estates subdivision.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
So a motion to adopt and a second, any public comment before, vote? All right, roll call vote.
Birch Wright?
Yes.
John Valencourt?
No.
Paula Anderson?
Yes.
Max Poy?
Yes.
Colton Martin?
Yes.
All right.
And then I've included an emergency clause based upon the, I think the urgency and the safety concerns of the neighborhood, I've included that so it can take effect immediately.
I'll make a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Start.
So a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause, roll call vote.
Birch Wright?
Yes.
John Valencourt?
No.
Paula Anderson?
Yes.
Max Poy?
Yes.
Colton Martin?
Yes.
All right, we can move on to the Arbor Board ordinance. And we will need to make the changes to section, it's the very last page, I think.
Page two?
Section two, there is. No, I think it's section three. Yeah, so it's section three. So it says, it tells us that we are not supposed to attach, replace any rope, wire, sign, poster, handbill, or any other object to any such tree.
With the exception of.
With the exception of.
Identification.
Arbor, what, what's the word?
Arboretum?
Arboretum, tag, signage.
Or you could just say there are.
Or maybe just unless otherwise approved by the city.
We spell that word.
A-R-B.
B-L-O-R. B-L-O-R.
I-T.
Yeah, arboretum. Good job.
I do have one question, though. We included conservation easements in our list of things, or list of places the city can do, where, let's see here.
It's, conservation easements just mean easements, period.
Right, but, I mean, I'm just, I just don't know if that, you know, our POA members, if you have any concerns with those conservation easements in the POAs that the city is basically, or, you know, and I'm not sure what we have regulatory-wise regarding the city's work done, or what we do in conservation easements, because we have all of those in the POAs. But so far, we have pretty much not touched those, to my knowledge.
We have done a project at Waterford where we planted a lot of maize supplied by Beaver Waterfield Alliance.
But that wasn't.
We haven't, we haven't put any regulations on that.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about like as far as city employees and city resources and funds going to something. So that's just, I just, you know, don't know if regulatory-wise we have already touched on something related to conservation easements with this sort of work going on inside of them.
I mean, this would be for the public safety, though, would be the only.
Right.
When Waterford, I think, was the first one started, there were some drainage issues and things like that. And as I recall, in the ordinance, original ordinance, if something needed to be fixed or taken care of and the POA didn't, then the city had some right about stepping in and fixing it. I can't remember exactly how that went, but.
I just didn't want us to possibly conflict with that, or if, you know, if it is firstly the POA's responsibility, that this almost makes it sound like it's our responsibility now. Or, you know, that it could be construed potentially as that.
I think Paula makes a good point.
Yeah.
I mean, we had an issue in Waterford that the homeowner thought it was the POA's responsibility, but it was not. We became an agreement and held, but the easement itself was encroaching on his property, so it was his responsibility.
So we just take out the word conservation and just put easements?
Well, it says held by the city, right? Those aren't held by the city.
Right.
Yeah.
And when I read it, I thought conservation easements were, we were just talking about easements along the roads. I wasn't thinking about conservation subdivision easements.
Yeah.
Those would be, but those would be our right of way.
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
That's right of way.
So should we take out conservation easements and just put in right of way? Well, I guess right of way is already there, public right of way, just take conservation easements out?
The Arbor Board has done, we just made a resource. I mean, like, I would have ran for Waterford to install, what, 16 dump truck loads of heavy rock in there?
I know, but this, this section is really specifically talking about planting, pruning, removing. So it could be, I'm concerned that it could be construed by somebody that is, if we have a conservation easement, like, let's just say Asherant, that area where they planted all those trees. They've got two or three dead trees, and they say, okay, we need you to come take them out.
Just take it out then, because if they, I mean, I worked with all of them on planting a bunch of stuff too, so.
I think we could still work with.
Yeah, we can work with, I mean, they have to be in there.
Yeah.
I would, I would agree. I think take conservation easements out.
Okay.
To me, the conservation easement is the, I mean, what were we saying? Why don't we look at the original wording on that?
This is the original wording. That part didn't change at all.
About conservation easements?
Yeah, that's the original.
What the city does on.
That was the original wording from, from the ordinance that was 127.
Is that the one when Waterford was first put in? Because there was a lot, there was a lot of discussion and what have you about what the city would have the right to do or should do on the conservation easements, which is the green space in Waterford and in the homes. It's been a long time, but I'm sure that, that some of that wording is probably still valid, because we hadn't mastered it.
Is there wording in any of the ordinances about conservation easements?
This predates me, I think, is what we mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is, this is 10, 12 years.
But I don't recall in any of the ordinances that we have in the city that it specifies anything about what can be done in the conservation easements by the city.
Conservation subdivision ordinances, you remember that probably, Paula.
Yeah.
Had, had some language about.
All the memories came flooding back about the conservation easement.
Is, or.
Oh, conservation easement and a green space.
It's the same thing.
I, I think now.
I think conservation easement is not this with green space. Whereas in our subdivision, yes. Whereas an easement is not, or a right of way is not.
Yeah, I mean, they were called conservation subdivisions, you know.
And that's how we got one acre lots and green space, couldn't mow it.
But my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, is that, my understanding was that the conservation subdivisions, as in our subdivision regulations, those, that green space is maintained by the POA. The city has no responsibility for anything to do with the green space. We're just allowing them to have that green space as an alternative to having two acre lots.
And what I'm telling you, that is true to a point, but there was some language originally that said, if, for instance, if there was some kind of terrible flooding event and a ditch suddenly appeared pointing right at Birch and John's place.
And that's what happened.
And the HOA wouldn't or couldn't take care of it, the city could. And then it seemed like maybe they could put a lien on something, or that was in the.
Well, there was another issue, somebody's backyard, that was, that's what we're talking about. Between two houses, it washed out, and a tree was falling, and. They, and they. They said it was the POA's responsibility. I said, no, it's not. The tree was going into, the tree was in his yard, it was going into the easement, and then it washed out below it, and they were afraid the whole yard was gonna wash out.
Going into the conservation.
Eventually went into the conservation easement. It was between his, it was the easement between his house. And it was eroding so bad, and the tree was about to go into his fence. And he tried to say it was our responsibility.
The POAs. But is the POA not, my understanding is the POA was responsible for all of the green space within their conservation subdivision.
Green space, I agree. Easement, I disagree.
Are there easements that are easements within the conservation subdivisions?
Which is different than a conservation easement, what we're talking about. This is just a drainage easement.
Oh, a drainage easement. So it's not the same as a conservation easement?
But it flows into the conservation easement, that's what I'm saying. I think that's all you see in the document. And I don't know the history, though, so.
It's, it's been a long time, but originally there was some language that.
I could see Waterford coming and saying, hey, if you have this ordinance, you come fix it.
Yeah, and I, I could say that I don't think it needs to be in the Arbor Board's, you know, ordinance for them to be able to do that. That's not really a responsibility, you know, in the intent of what they're supposed to be doing for Tree City.
It was several, I wanna say it was 10, 15,000 dollars to fix it.
So we should just remove the entire wording, conservation easement, out of that ordinance? And then we'll add the Arbor tag for the trees?
And the other thing with this that I am curious about, or just that caused me some, a little bit of concern here, is that we have seven Arbor Board committee members, and I have concerns that we're gonna be able to find seven people willing to serve. And this says that you have to have a quorum of four, which I think that, and that number's gonna be hard to get. So I might suggest that we bump it, you know, because, and volunteers are always welcome to join board meetings and the board times. But I would say that maybe we should consider dropping it down to five.
I posed that to the Arbor Board when we had our meeting, and I think, my concern were both at that meeting, and they wanted to keep it at seven. So I literally just had a conversation with another citizen to ask if they would be willing to come on the Arbor Board, which he is, because we need seven people, and Perry Ann decided she would.
You're talking about all the people that resigned, wanted to keep it at seven?
Well, let's just be clear. A lot of the people that were on the Arbor Board, it wasn't really board members. Those were volunteers that weren't really functioning as board members. That's why this ordinance is coming forward, is because we need to organize it as a board. If the board's gonna be making a decision and voting to recommend things to the Parks Commission and the council, it needs to come from. it needs to come from a unified body that has a quorum to be able to make a vote. Instead of just a bunch of volunteers that meet and not always get in, in, you know, the meeting at the same time, and it's not organized in a, in a very, you know, I say rigid, but structured fashion, so that at least we know how often and when.
But.
But you also have here that two members can be from, we both have.
Correct.
Which is same as our planning commission.
Yes.
But to Paula's point, if, if the city struggles in getting enough to volunteer and serve, then their hands will be tied at every meeting if the quorum requirement is, is set where it is.
I, I brought that subject, I brought it up at the last meeting and.
Why don't we give some flexibility and say that, you know, a minimum of five. Say quorum of three and say it can be up to seven members.
Why don't you just say minimum of five, one's through.
So Mary, Mary, there was, while you were out, there's been talk about the number being seven, like we brought up at the meeting. I said, maybe we need to drop that to five for the board. You can have as many volunteers as you want. Uh, because their concern is that it may be difficult to get seven Arbor Board members that are going to be there and have a quorum of four people at, at each meeting to be able to make a vote. So Paula's recommendation was nothing but to drop it to five?
They're saying a minimum, minimum of five, we could say a maximum of seven. So basically say you can have five up to seven, and then just say a quorum is three, or either three or fifty percent or.
Long if you do, if you do an even number, you might have, you won't have to get, if you have a disagreement, you're not going to have enough to vote.
Yeah.
If you have four, you may have two and two.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think five and three makes sense, but I don't know why y'all thought seven and five was the.
So the understanding that I had, Betty brought this forward, is that they're dropping down to quarterly meetings as opposed to monthly meetings. And with seven people on board, it would be easier to get a quorum, um, and, and easier for people to plan ahead for these, for these meetings, to be present at these meetings. Uh, and her point was the more people that you have, the easier it's going to be to get those people together.
To get the quorum.
I agree, I agree with that. If you say a minimum of five with a maximum of seven, you can hopefully get the seven.
And you can hopefully have at least.
That was discussed.
Hopefully not at least three people that are meeting to have a quorum and be able to vote on things.
Yeah.
I don't want to manage y'all's board at all, but I think if you don't have enough people and you have an even number of a quorum.
Well, the problem with the Arbor Board, I'll just be real clear, is there are a bunch of old retired folks like me in your seventies. And that's why a lot of them have quit, because they, they don't care a whole lot for meetings. They want to get together and work. And often it's, um, we're in times when we can get just a certain amount together. And I think the mayor's, you know, wanting it to be more specifically dedicated and organized, more like the city council. I don't care on this one.
Well, my concern was is that we're now putting in ordinances that the Arbor Board has to weigh in on decisions that are going to come to the council for voting. And that we didn't have a functional board that met with a quorum of people that made those decisions and brought those forward to the council. So it needs to, if we're going to have recommendations being made by a committee or a board, I think it needs to be organized in such a way that we know who's voting and when, and when there's a quorum and when there's not. So that's why I felt like it was important for us to at least organize it in that fashion. Arbor Board can have as many volunteers as, as, as they want. I don't, I mean, I don't have any.
So with a minimum of five, maximum of seven, quorum of three.
I'm fine with that.
Each turn to.
I think that's fine. I, I've always been the thing to try to get as many people involved as possible.
Yeah, and we, we don't want to put a cap on that at all, but we also want this to be functional and be able to have a decision coming forward, so.
I think it's a good point, Paula.
Yeah.
Can you change it? Great.
So a minimum of five, maximum of seven board members with a minimum of three to make a quorum, then.
Is that only when there are five, five members, or is that, is that a?
Yeah, if there's five, if there's five board members, then it would take three to make a quorum. If there's seven, it would take four.
Exactly, so you need to just spell that part out.
I think six or seven, yeah, I mean, just like you all here. It's four, uh, I would assume the same, so we, and we can spell it out that way.
Yeah, yeah. With.
Exactly.
Majority votes.
Six or seven members, the quorum would be four. Five would be three.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
You're going to take conservation subdivision now?
Yep, that's coming up.
And then on section three, you might want to put in just like a, a process for exceptions.
Well, I think that that's what they said.
Well, I, well, they sounded like they wanted to restrict it just to tree I D tags, but, you know, you never know what you're going to do.
Or other Arbor Board approved signs.
Well, I'm just thinking, like, if you needed to put a camera up, security camera, you know, something like that.
That is true, because there's some of those that are like, I have none on my trees. They're solar, I mean, because we're going to need them in the park eventually. It's the cameras that are solar that, that relay a signal back to the phone.
Yeah, so I just have.
Some other exceptions, just for about city councils.
Yeah, just exemption process, or even the mayor, just exemptions, yeah.
I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Colton. I didn't think of that. You are right. Those are.
I knew there was other things you used to do.
Are there exceptions, are there changes?
Um, with those report times.
So one of the things that I was thinking at from other, because when I started to do this, to do this ordinance, I pulled all the ordinances from all the area cities that have Tree City USA, they don't, they, they don't have to report to the council every month. So they either report once a year, uh, which I thought was maybe not enough, um, or they report biannually. So I put them there at least biannually. Now, you guys can request them to report however, however often you want. Uh, but as far as actually like, you know, being mandated to at least give a report to the council, biannual was what, uh, everybody.
But they can, I mean, if they have something and they want to come report.
Yeah, they can report anytime.
They can report any, anytime during the year.
Does biannual meet your needs? Sounds like y'all are working for, a lot of what's meeting, custom discussed.
Yeah, yeah, fine.
Yeah, Betty and Mary are here working on one of them.
They did.
Putting all the, the matting down.
Do we? Well, I guess, I'm trying to just think about budget information wise, all of that, when it's going to be, if June and December are the best months for us to receive that biannual reports. Again, you know, because as far as that biannual report, we may want to.
Well, I figured December is when we approve our, we're going to try to always approve our budget in December.
But we're looking at the budget though.
But they can work with city hall to get that in the budget ahead of time.
They're going to have their budget, they have a variance of that, they can come to us and ask.
And the budgets, you know.
Working document.
Yep.
Five thousand dollars every year is the budget.
Making sure it's.
So does that come back? Yeah, I think we need to bring it back.
There's quite a bit there.
Another meeting.
I mean, it's actually, because even some of the Arbor Board members that are coming on, the newer ones are like, well, if this ordinance goes through and we're having a meeting in December, are we supposed to be at that meeting or are we actually getting, you know, and is our office term starting in January? And so there's been a little bit of confusion about that as well. So I think they're all still planning on going to the December twelfth meeting, so, yeah.
I'll pick Mary's up there.
I can.
But Betty's still having the twelfth.
So again, it's on the downside of doing it for the.
All right, so we will bring this back for next month. Correct? With those changes? Moving on. What's the next one? Okay, the ordinance regarding the master plan is next.
The master plan's not done yet, right?
No, and it's not going to be done. It won't be done probably until next year because the Parks Commission's not meeting. So each park commissioner gave their input and each park commissioner gave that to Danielle, and Danielle brought it to city hall, and Abby's going to have to put all that together, send it back out to them, and then they will make any revisions based on what each of them see from the other person's comments.
But we've done two readings on this, so it sounds like we just need to table it for this month.
Yeah, and I, as I'm sitting here thinking, we need to, I think, when we adopt this, we're going to do it simultaneously with adopting or approving the master plan as it is, and that's our, our fresh start. Um, and to Max's point is, we want that to be reflected as being approved and not being able to be amended without further approval by the council. But I think right now it's premature for us to do anything. We need to wait until that's done and then bring it, bring it through.
Motion to table, or do we need to motion to table?
Yeah, go ahead and table.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Ordinance establishing master plan purpose.
All right, so the motion to table the, uh, ordinance for master plan.
So this is a, a process not being adhered to.
What?
That we're talking about.
I think they're all to.
I, I think one of the same. I, I mean.
Because I, we got two.
There is the other one as far as adhering to it.
Yeah. I would propose that we could go ahead and adopt that. Unless there's some legal reason that.
There's not. No, I mean, you all, you all can.
We're just trying to ensure that.
It's ours or will.
That it's followed.
Have we done the three readings of that one though?
No, I think we, we've read it. We think we read it.
I don't think we read it. We read the, we read the other one.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to read entitled only the ordinance to ensure adherence to the master plan.
Second.
For first reading?
For first reading.
We have a motion in the second to read title only for the first reading of the ordinance to adhere to the master plan. Roll call.
Birch Wright.
Yes.
John Valencourt.
Yes.
Paula Anderson.
Yes.
Max Poy.
Yes.
Colton Martin.
Yes.
An ordinance to ensure adherence to the master plan for parks in the city of Goshen. Need to.
As we, yeah.
Approve the reading.
Yep. So, I mean, we can go ahead and adopt this, like we said, and.
Well, we.
I mean, it's not, we adopting basically a plan that was already in place, but it's not going to cause us any issues because the old plan is.
So I, I would, and Ryan, I would caution doing anything with this as far as the emergency clause, because we haven't adopted an official ma- master plan by the council yet.
Right.
Because we don't have one.
Right.
So I don't know that, I mean, I think we can read this, but I don't think it could be.
Approved. But this is the first reading.
Yeah.
Correct.
We could get the first reading, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
You, you talked in January before we do the third.
We should have, but hopefully we'll have a master plan, well, Parks Commission doesn't need, doesn't have it for December. Unless it's done like probably.
We can still schedule a working session, so if we need to.
I just don't know if it'll be done by the first, by January.
You all could wait the third reading next month if, if we were ready to.
If we were ready, but we're not going to be ready.
But at least.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready this time.
It says, or we'll adopt if we know that we will be able to adopt it in the next couple of months. At that point in time, then we would be able have it adopted and ready to go in place once that plan is set.
Motion to approve the reading.
Motion to approve the reading.
Second.
All right, let's have a motion in the second to approve the reading. Roll call.
Birch Wright.
Yes.
John Valencourt.
Yes.
Paula Anderson.
Yes.
Max Poy.
Yes.
Colton Martin.
Yes.
All right, so move on to the twenty twenty five budget proposals. You guys looked at all of it?
I did see a couple of things.
Which one do you want me to pull up first?
The, oh, the.
The general budget or?
The general budget.
General fund.
General fund budget. One thing that is possibly going to put us five thousand dollars in the hole is that we have the Act nine eighty eight showing as revenue coming in, but that should also have a expenditure going out because those are funds that can't be spent out of the general fund. And I don't see a line item for those Act nine eighty eight funds going out anywhere to go to the nine eighty eight funds.
It's here under transfer. Act nine eighty eight fund transfer.
Um, but that is under revenue.
Oh, under.
So you should, yeah, yeah, so you show the money coming in, but we also need to show it going back out to the nine eighty eight fund. Which is an issue that I think we've had in the past. So under expenditures, you should have the same five thousand dollars.
It's really pass through.
Yeah, because it's pass through.
Yeah.
I just did a search for nine eighty eight, just to try to see if I had missed skipped over it, and the only thing that showed up was, you know, we're going to have some of those things paid for out of the nine eighty eight, um, that are zeros now.
It may be, she may be including those things into the, uh, police department budget, because there's certain things that are.
Yeah, but those are. Those are listed as zeros on the things that are, the only one that's noted as nine eighty eight fund is listed as a zero as proposed amount on there. Like if you just do a, a, you know, find text or, or find text tool, you have to see a search up there and just put in nine eighty eight.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, under, even though it, and I don't know this because Shawna's not here and I could ask her.
Right, and I, I emailed her about it before and I, you know, we.
And she hasn't sent it over to us.
No, I didn't, so.
Because what she may have done is there's certain things that can be taken out of the nine eighty eight fund.
But they're not noted as such.
Yeah, and she may know that like, one of these or two of these items come out of the nine eighty eight, just hasn't identified it as.
Right, but we need to have those, either we need to have those identified or we need to put a five thousand dollars as an expense to go out.
Oh, here it is. Act nine eighty eight.
No, that's a, it's zero.
That's a zero, right?
Yeah.
That's a follow up. Either she put it somewhere or she didn't, and if she did, it's going to be an expense.
Jason, do you know? Did she talk to you about it?
She didn't talk to me about that. But the only thing, Act nine eighty eight, Act nine eighty eight can only be used for police, B Big Bowl equipment, that's it.
Yeah, and the other thing is that on the street fund, they said that we were going to be paying, uh, for the recycling out of the nine eighty eight fund if I.
Well, you can't do that.
And you can't do that.
What?
I think on the street fund. But anyway, yeah, we don't go to the street fund.
Couple of questions on the general fund.
Okay.
The, uh, the workers' comp, the pay freeze, is that how you said, retirement, the low fee retirement?
Low fee.
Low fee, that's all increasing that much? That's just a cost of investment? And then the only other thing that stuck out to me was Chief Travis, your, your budget's down almost fifteen thousand dollars. You're good with that?
Yeah, I think we can make it work. Because we had some, we had some items this year that were higher than, you know, we're not going to meet that, not going to meet this number. I don't think we're going to change for the year. A lot of them are stuff like restrictions and stuff like that that are solid, they're not ever going to change. So I think.
Are auto insurance making a lot of news?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I had on the general fund. Sorry, Paul.
Oh, no worries. Um, the only other thing I kind of saw that, um, I'm questioning is that, uh, we have um, a line item for doing paint on the fire station.
Correct.
And I would love to provide some funds to the fire stations, but I don't think that.
But we own that building.
Do we?
So it's a city owned building.
Okay.
So for maintenance of a, that's a, that's just capital expenditure for, you know, improvements to our infrastructure. Because we own the building and they use it.
I guess my question is, does it actually physically need the paint or is that just something to, to match the city?
It needs more than paint. So part of the painting is they're going to seal some of the areas where birds go in there and fly around and poop all over their equipment. Because that's part of what's going on now. You go in there, there's birds' nests all inside the building because there's areas that just have openings up around the leaves. So part of the painting is they're going to seal all that.
So that's just non recurring maintenance you got to do.
It is.
Well, I'm saying, I just was, you know, again, working out of.
I actually thought it was going to cost more than that, and then we pulled up what we paid for our painting, you know, at the city hall and for here. And so we, we think that it's probably going to cost about that much, because I thought it was going to be probably five thousand more than that. And, uh, that's when we pulled the invoices and looked at what the cost was for here.
Okay, and so it's, it's more than just paint, is what you're saying, is that?
It is. I mean, it is paint, but it's also ceiling to use and being able to maintain the building, so.
Birds and squirrels like to get in?
They do.
Nice and dry.
Anything, uh, anything that crawls will try to get into a building.
Yeah, I'm a little, with this small amounts there, you know, the utilities, the water line looked a little steep, but it may be that, that's looking at what we're gonna be paying for watering the plants up and.
Okay, that's, I had her actually increase that because my concern was is that we didn't.
Once we start irrigating?
And once we start watering, then it's probably gonna cost more than what she had in there.
Yeah.
So I raised that some. That was one of the ones her and I looked at, and I was like, I don't think that's gonna be enough. I mean, you know, we may, I mean, we'll meet again before December and we may fine-tune a few things, but, you know, if there's things that you guys, like, you know, Paul, thank you for looking at it so closely and emailing Shawna.
Yeah.
Um, if, if there's things like that you find between now and December, because I like to get this approved for December so we know what we're going into for, you know, moving to here. I've been, yeah, please send those so that we all get those adjusted.
It's your bottom line. It's a good budget.
It is. And I think, I don't know if you guys realize, and here it was helpful in, you know, pulling out some of the things that were in the parks budget that's not really, it shouldn't be in the parks budget because it's truly capital improvements. I mean, those are things that are gonna improve the value of the city, you know, assets, so.
Yeah, a couple of points that we wanna make out of this, when, you know, we made up, we top-loaded some of the expenses that were negative last month. We called that up this time in revenue, but we top-loaded our expenses, so that's turned into a positive. With the salary increases, I know we talked about the last meeting, we had those salary increases for the staff. We kept those increases by reducing some other expenses right at 70%. So that 70% is the same as it was in '24, even with increases to '25, we're still at 70%. So I wanna make sure that you guys noticed that. Which still leaves us about a third of the city revenue for operating expenses, and we are staying within that operating outside of capital improvements that we've moved from the parks, which may, that'll come up for your decision if we have the full money either from the general fund from excesses we've been carrying over from the other year. Uh, Birch, we will have, we're gonna do a, for the next meeting in December. I'm gonna go ahead and annualize depreciation and amortization in the next report, so you'll see that. So this will be a negative next month, but there will be the non-cash deductions that will be included in expenses that's normally not there. So that will be pulled back out. So we will definitely have that. We will get your asset list and a full depreciation schedule to show assets that have been purchased for 2024 that's increased the city's total assets accumulation for the year and anything that's been deleted. So we'll get a report of that next, next year. It'll be in December, but just a month early. I don't think there's anything we're buying any more new capital assets in a month of December.
Now, we.
So it'll be finalized for that point.
And I think this worked well this year with us front-loading because, I'll just, let's be frank, it is difficult to get all the projects done when you're trying to stay on top of contractors and, you know, you know, like the rock, I mean.
Yeah.
I've probably made 10 phone calls.
That was one question on the street funds, so liability of Curtis Construction, just in case?
Yeah, that's what that was for. Now, the liability on Curtis Construction, we put that in there just in case.
That is, that is, yeah, just in case.
If we don't think it'll grow.
If it's gonna be more, we need to know, uh, cause we do, we do have that liability built in, just in case we do get stuck with that.
That's all I wanted to add.
Yeah.
Only other thing that was in there, um, so, um, Brian, you may wanna increase his rates a few of the buildings enough that we drop this budget.
Just happy to help. Brian was much more efficient, that's why. We, we talked about it.
Any other questions about the street fund that you guys have?
And one other thing, you will be getting, Brian will not be getting a 1099, but you guys will be getting a statement where that gets back in and will be reported, just wanted to make that clear. You will be reporting that on the personal, so you will be getting that in general.
That will be a 1099?
Okay, um, any public comment? Nope, okay, and once we get this budget finalized, we'll put it on the website and it can be reviewed by the public at any time, just like our budget.
Cause we're hoping to get it finalized in December, that way we have a set point that we give it here.
Yeah.
Thanks, Paul, I'll get it.
Um, yeah, well, okay, it was under, and I saw nine, too many 99s or something. Um, under the individual salary list, uh, the recycling, Alan Barber, says transferred to 1099, so I'm just not, is that?
They, for whatever reason, they had him as a non-1099, was it W-2 that they were doing? And he's not supposed to be W-2, he's a 1099, okay. That's the appropriate way to pay him.
Okay.
He just got categorized incorrectly.
988 to 1099 is confused whenever I was trying to.
Yeah, 1098 is a mortgage statement, that has nothing to do with it.
But yeah, but I still, like I said, you know, that $5,000.
Yeah, we were paying payroll taxes on something we didn't have to.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move on to the Highway 45 Goshen total contract, which Brian says.
No update.
No update, so have heard anything? Hopefully not gonna hear anything.
Hopefully.
Which I've got money set aside.
We've got it, we, we have planned for it in case it comes up. All right, under new business, ordinance establishing.
So just a follow-up on that, we, we, my revelations, we've reached out, so we think we're responsible. We made it to work out numbers. Yes.
So this ordinance for the legal business name information, this is required for our HUD grant. So it's SAM.gov, this is how we log in and do all of our reporting of all of the government grants that we're administering. And in order to get our system updated with all of the legal information that they need, they are requiring either an ordinance or a bill that identifies the city's address. Unfortunately, all of our mail goes to the PO box, so there's nothing that comes directly to the physical address. They need an ordinance to be able to have, to be able to give a copy to SAM.gov to be able to get us registered correctly.
Love to get that.
This is very important for us to get the money.
Well, same as the system of reward management, I believe, and you have to, it's a, you just gotta fill it out.
Yeah.
So without this, you can't fill it out, you don't get your.
Correct, and that's what we've been fighting with for several months about, just filling out.
Uh, motion to read and title only.
Sir.
You wanna suspend the rules?
No, it's just resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry, resolution.
So it says ordinance on here.
It does say ordinance, but it's a resolution.
Resolution.
On the.
Okay, I'm sorry, I hear it says ordinance.
Yeah, it does say ordinance on the agenda, proportionally, yes. So.
What's that?
All right, do we have a motion in the second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so.
A resolution affirming the legal business name information of the city of Goshen ordinance.
Any public interest?
Motion to adopt.
Sir.
All right, so we'll, motion to adopt in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Get that. Uh, project and grant updates. There's really not a whole up, but we did get the $10,000 award from the forestry grant. So that will come forward and we'll be able to utilize that starting in January. We'll probably start working with Design Scape's to get that done. The other thing that we are waiting to hear back, and we should hear back next week or the week after, is the Arkansas State Park grant. So you guys know we got selected to present, so Mike and I drove to Little Rock, I presented. Eight minutes was how long I got, and then we left, and then we'll hear back, so.
Did we ever find out how many others presented?
Yeah, there were 13 total, and, yeah.
What's the value if you go?
$207,000, and that will be already matched because we purchased the property.
Is it all or none? It's whatever you applied for?
Yeah, yep. So, um, and then the other thing that, uh, we need to discuss is that we have an RDOC grant that has been awarded last January that we have been continuing to work with. And we've had Crafton and Toll on this project, and it has been delayed all year. And those delays are coming at the expense of us getting started on the project. And I say this because we've had these other issues that have been ongoing with the projects with Crafton and Toll. And I think that it's time for us to schedule a meeting and sit down and, and have a discussion about our contract with them and whether we're gonna continue in that contract if we're not able to expedite some of these things. These are things that should have been done long ago. There is no reason we don't have bridge design plans when we've known we're gonna have a bridge since the beginning of the year. And that's what we're waiting on at this point. Just heard back from Ashley at RDOC this, last week.
Bridge design plans for.
For the crossing of the creek.
For the park.
It's before that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been.
No, no, these are, no, they redid the design plans last year.
I understand, but that project started.
The project started, yes, yes, but there was, there were revisions in March of last year, April of last year, that were finalized in June of last year. So Crafton and Toll has had since June of last year to get this on and up and gone to the state for approval.
What's their excuse?
There's been, there has been so many things that have just not, that's just been left undone. I mean, there were things that they were gonna do, that they left in the, in the design plans about, you know, these things that they had to put in the creek because they were gonna do these barriers in the creek because initially it was gonna be box culverts that were, that was the crossing. But we took those box culverts out last Jan, June, but they were still left in the design plan, so when RDOC got those, they said, wait, if you're gonna do this, you have to get clearance from, you know, the Corps of Engineers, and they're like, oh, no, we're not using those. Okay, well, why are they still there? So then they had to come back to us, and then Crafton and Toll has to take it out. Well, then it goes back to RDOC again for review, then it takes another month, and then we hear back, oh, well, the bridge design plans aren't there. We need a full set of bridge design plans, and we've known that this is a, you know, a bridge abutment to abutment crossing creek with nothing in the creek for, I mean, especially, I know since August of last year, 100% that we've had that. So I don't know why that's not there.
So what's the request, Mary, for, for you and your staff to meet with them, then the council?
I think we need to meet with them first, and we need to, I, I wanna, I wanna meet with the, with Luke, who's the project supervisor, and I'm gonna ask that his supervisor be there with us, and that we have a meeting, and I think Brian should be there.
Brian should be there. Are we at risk of losing our grant money?
No, we can end up going with a different contractor if we decide that they're not.
My question, there's not a timeline where we have to have completed to, to spend the money or we lose it, is the grant money, is that a concern?
No, no, it's only after we get the grant money from RDOC, then we have to have it completed within the time.
And they won't give it to us until we get this, okay, all right.
But I do think that it affects our ability to get a grant from them on phase two, because we haven't even started phase one. And we applied for a phase two grant in March, and we haven't heard back, we won't hear back until January, but I think it affects us. We have some public comment.
Sorry, I was, can you clarify what bridge or creek?
So originally, there was an RDOC cap grant that was applied for during, I think Max's administration is when it was applied for. And it was originally gonna be for a, um, a bridge that was gonna be for ADA access, access over Mill Branch Creek to get to the chicken house pad, what they call Mill Branch Central.
Within the park.
Within the park.
In the park, okay.
And so because we were able to establish a south entrance to provide access to the, the whole south end of the park on the other side of Mill Branch Creek, they felt like that it would be better, uh, you know, aesthetically as well as, you know, not spending that big amount of money to just cross the creek and come up with a concrete path, to do a more nature path that's concrete with a low water, you know, it's not low water, but it's a bridge that goes across in an area where it's not box culverts and it doesn't have to have the, the rise in elevation and a bunch of red dirt, you know, fill. And so, um, so that, that plan changed last year around May. And so, and then in June, I think it got confirmed in June or July of last year that that was the new project and that was the, the direction that was being taken. That then all that has to go back for a review process to RDOC for that to be approved from the original grant application. It was approved, but then it's taken all this time to try to get the approval to get the money. Cause we can't start the project or send it out for bid until we get the approval from RDOC that we can send it out for bid. And then once we send it out for bid, well, that's another 30 to 60 days before we can even get started. And this project, we, we planned on starting it in August.
By someone, yeah.
Yeah.
So we got meetings to have before next city council here.
Yeah, I agree. So we'll reach out to them and have a sit-down.
Is that what you chose?
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
I, that's all, that's really all I have as far as other grants, uh, stuff, um, for follow-up. I don't think there's anything, as far as the HUD grant, so, uh, we purchased the property, we've got the deed to the property that we've utilized those funds for, and now we've completed the park entrance on the north side, and that utilizes all of the HUD funds with the city kicking in some additional funds because of the change as well, so. All right, any other questions you guys have about grant updates?
Did that answer your question?
Yes, I was just curious about where it was.
Where the bridge was.
It's kinda like those bridges you see like at, um, Wilson Park and, you know, the steel, you know, bridges that traverse creeks. All right, so item C, resolution 2024, mayor salary and 2024, uh, item D for.
Yeah, I'll go with it, so I, uh, I know John's got some AI language he printed out on those, that's pertinent for this, for this topic.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. John called me yesterday, um, in reviewing the budget, noticed increases in salaries, and I think it prompted a question for him of when we last approved, or you all last approved of increases for the mayor's salary and the recorded treasurer. And there was not a resolution adopted at that time. And to clarify, it's not required that there be one, it's just, the requirement is that you all, um, have the authority to raise or set salaries. Um, and so you all did that last year, I think, when the budget was approved. And so there's no concerns there from an audit standpoint, but from a record-keeping standpoint and ease of going back and looking, I think it makes sense that John requested that I prepare these resolutions that essentially just confirms what happened at the end of and beginning of, end of last year, beginning of this year. And so that's all that these resolutions do here, and obviously these salaries will remain in place until such time as y'all would raise them. Keep in mind, you can't, uh, reduce salaries of elected officials during their term, uh, unless the official asks for it, but you can certainly raise them. So that's what these are, sitting in front of you, and it was last minute, last night when I get out of talks, so they didn't make it in your packet, but that's what was sitting in front of you all.
The, and the reason why is because we have, in the past, done it with a resolution. Okay, when Max, uh, I don't know if it was his first term or second term, I don't remember, but they raised the salary.
Well, that, that was the first time that they paid a salary.
That was a raise.
It was a raise, wasn't it, Max?
That was a raise, anyhow, it was done by, it was done by resolution, the amount that would be paid. Okay, and also, when Marge got her first, um, pay, resolution increasing rate of pay for recorded treasurer, that was done by resolution as well. However, the raise of 600 and some odd dollars for the recorded treasurer last year for 2024, okay, was, no resolution was ever done. So I thought that that should be covered, because you have a resolution that has a payment on the amount. And based on the resolution originally, then we need to cover our butts. Because you don't know what these auditors.
We do, so the audit, the auditors, so before we ever did this, the auditors came, we had, we, you know. So the audit, the auditors, so before we ever did this, the auditors came, we had, we, you know, I called for an audit last year. The auditor came, the auditor, under no uncertain terms, said, as long as it's recorded in the minutes, that's adequate. So that's why we didn't do a resolution. Resolution's fine, it makes it easier for us to find. I mean, that's, that is absolutely true. But if it's in our budget and the budget's been adopted and it's been voted yes by the council, then that becomes part of our audit trail. And so that is part of the audit, is our minutes. So if we approve a budget and it's listed in the budget as individual salaries, then that automatically becomes part of the audit trail, is that that is the approved budget for the city. So you don't have to do a resolution. I'm fine with doing.
My, my proposal that we pass these two resolutions.
I'll, I'll tell you, I, I talked to Kashana today, John, when, when I was preparing these. And she was receptive to the idea of having these resolutions in place just because it's easy to go back and, and find that. I just wanted to clarify, just so there's no concern among the council, the fact that that did not happen in December does not open any concerns about where the city stands from an audit standpoint, based upon the meetings that the mayor and staff had. Two different issues. So John made a motion, I'll second.
Which one am I reading?
He said both. All right, y'all sit back. I'm not all.
Okay.
Resolution for the recorded treasurer, second.
Second, you made a motion.
I made a motion.
And I seconded.
So we have a first and a second for the resolution confirming the salary of the recorder treasurer.
For 2024.
For 2024. Title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution confirming salary of recorder treasurer. Motion to approve.
Second. All right, so the motion to approve in a second, any public comment? All right, all those in favor?
But we do still continue with the normal course, normal business.
This doesn't change anything.
Doesn't change the process.
Correct.
It's just best to break it now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Correct.
Just makes it easier to find in an audit.
All right.
Still the comment.
I make a motion to read and title only the salary of the mayor for, just for 24.
Second.
All right, so a motion and a second to read and title only, all those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution confirming salary of mayor.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
So a motion to adopt and a second, any public comment before we vote? All those in favor?
All right. Aye.
All right, so period.
Do we have to do this in 2025 also?
That's.
Yes.
It's changed.
For, for everyone?
You don't have to. If they break a resolution, then yes, we will do it, so.
Take by the entire personnel?
No.
No.
Just for.
Just elected officials.
Elected officials. Elected officials.
All right, so we'll move on to the reports, comments.
Is there anyone interested in serving on the Arbor Board?
I already have a full Arbor Board.
Never mind.
I have seven people already on the Arbor Board at this point. So anybody else can be volunteered.
Yeah. I thought it was vacant.
Nope, there's no vacancies right now. And all those people will be brought to the council for approval after we approve the ordinance.
John, maybe you could be looking for a planning commissioner. I would just like to thank any veterans of the audience who are on the council for Veterans Day yesterday. Thank you for your service, and while we can do, we do, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
That was a break of the mic, I don't know the other guy.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comment before we motion to adjourn?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I guess I, I appreciate all of council members for the time that y'all spend on coming to the meetings and whatever your pre-planning is. I appreciate it. I would like to know where Sean Mayfield's at. Because he hasn't been here for a very long time.
Yes, he has. Oh, no, no, he has.
Recently.
Yes.
But before that, he missed several meetings, and then he's absent tonight, and just curious.
He normally will text or call or send an email, but he didn't at this time, so I don't know if something came up or an emergency.
He was, he got the tongue lashing with the rest of y'all at the public forum.
Yeah.
He was, yeah.
We have another comment?
There's a lot of things. There seems to be a huge increase in the amount of air brakes that are being used coming from the east.
On Highway 45?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure about coming from the west when town hits them, but coming from the east where the speed changes. I mean, it's always been a problem, but it's increasing.
Yeah, we've got, we've got. Got the ordinance in place.
Yes, we do. In the last. And I'm not sure if we have any citation history of.
No, yeah.
But I think we need to become the, the town that's known in art and song.
Yeah, we could.
You know, the air brake guy. Let's put up worse than that, there's no air brakes or something.
Actually, that's a good, that's a good, well.
There's some signs up already, but there's not.
Well, but we can't put, we can't put signs up on Highway 45 unless RDOT approves of them.
And then there's also need some signs that say, your speed is this now, a red light sign.
Yeah, those are $6,000 a piece.
I think they'd be well worth it because.
And we can't put those.
These are coming down there 55 miles an hour.
We can't put those on Highway 45 because that's an RDOT state highway. I mean, we can put them in, I've looked at for, for Fire Tower because those chicken trucks come barreling through here 45 miles an hour, 50.
I think we're well known for citations for air brakes, and the, the word will get around.
All you have to do is, is issue a few of them and the word will.
So Jason.
The word will be, get out there. And I, you know, you're, you're 100% correct. You say coming from the east, well, coming from the west.
Yeah, you get some down.
Okay. And across the flat.
Go ahead, come here.
Across that whole flat, I hear air brakes all the time.
I think we, we just need to.
I hear it all the time.
Compression, I don't think you can call them jack brakes or anything like.
Jake brakes is a.
That's a particular brand.
Copyrighted term, and so we couldn't put.
So can you, can you enforce it without a sign?
Yeah. You couldn't put that in an ordinance.
It's a, it's a Jake.
Jason.
We have an ordinance against it, we can.
It's just a switch.
Even without a sign? Okay. And then, I have a question also about Church Street. So there's a sign that says, no through traffic for trucks or weight limit, I don't remember exactly.
It's a weight limit.
Okay. But I see big trucks going down there all the time.
Yep.
So are we stopping people?
We can, we're not right now.
Okay. I only ask that because it's pretty narrow. It's a pretty narrow road. And when I turn and come up that road and we've got a big truck coming down, it's, it's pretty wild. So.
Do we do this or Riverside?
Anyway, I feel like you're listening to my.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't.
We do this first.
I don't hear, I don't hear the air brakes from my house, but I can imagine that they're.
You will.
They are here. They come down Slaughter Mountain and they hit the bottom there, and then they, they, they use it all the way across.
I'm far enough up on my hill, I hear them from all directions.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, you do, don't you, Mike?
All right, Jason, you got your work cut out for you.
Just bring in more revenue.
Any other comments?
And I don't even go to sleep with my hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Colton, multiple.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 8:08. Motion to adjourn at 8:08.